Alright, at seven o'clock, we'll call the regular village board meeting to order. Everyone with rise to say the blood please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That corporate please call a roll.
Maravika here, Jones, March.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Ham.
Here.
Bowden.
Here.
A public or corrections to the minutes of the January thirteenth, twenty twenty regular village board meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as presented? If not, a motion to accept as presented.
Second.
Second.
Motion by trustee Bowden, seconded by trustee Moravka.
Bowden?
Yes.
Moravka?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Accounts payable and payroll, payroll pay period ending eleven eleven nineteen, one eleven nineteen, let's be one eleven twenty.
Yes, I'm so sorry.
That's okay, one eleven twenty in the amount of fifty thousand two seventeen twenty six. General fund eighty three thousand nine forty eight eighty seven, giving a total of all funds eighty three thousand nine forty eight eighty seven. Are there any questions on any of the bills or the payroll? If not, a motion to pay the bills and the payroll.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Parker, seconded by trustee Ham.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Moravka?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Item four, public comment and or questions on, and or questions on any non agenda item.
Hi, my name is Nino Janjan, I'm over at four 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 South Second Street. Purchased the house about fifteen sixteen years ago. Well, I noticed about a year after I purchased the house that I go through extreme flooding. It's not a flood pain, I had that check before I purchased the home, nor was I disclosed of this matter. Through all the administrations in the last fifteen years, phone calls to the village, it was like I was swept under the rug. Until I met Mrs. Ee. She is so far the only person in fifteen years to start helping. However, I just got an email from her on last Friday, or at least that's what I know today. Asking if I got in touch with the farmer behind me or the landowner. No, I can't, because in his eyes, it's the village's problem, in your eyes, it's his problem. Whose problem is it while I'm flooding two to three feet of water around everywhere? My house is gonna get condemned. Whose problem is it? Why is it that I have to obtain a lawyer, engineers and everything else? I shouldn't even be in this problem. If that's the case, and the village deems that the landowner or the farmer's problem, what is the village exactly gonna do to expedite this, so I'm not troubled? What about all the damage all the way down to Route fifty? My neighbor's driveway is destroyed, my sump pump hasn't shut off, it was off three times, three weeks last year, three weeks. It runs continuously twenty-four seven, nonstop. This last heavy rainfall, I had to obtain a two, I'm sorry, three inch trash pump to pump up three feet of water. Do you drive down the block right now? Let's go rolling water. This is severe. Other people are affected, people stop, school buses stop. What's going on? Aqua's been in my house numerous of times, making my water service break. It's that bad. What is the village planning to do since everyone's standing in the circle pointing fingers? The way I'm looking at it is, it's a triangle, I'm pointing fingers at the landowner and the village, while the village and the landowners are pointing their fingers at each other. Okay. If the village is a hundred percent, it's the landowner's problem, why is the village asking me an email, have I been in contact with the landowner? Well, if you guys are diligently working together, you wouldn't have to ask me that. It sounds like no one's working together. How are we gonna fix a problem when no one's working together? I spoke to Bob, the village guy, I don't know.
The director of the village.
Yes, Austin dude, aimed by Austin. They've been in contact with ComEd, and the rail tracks, whatever. Things are starting to happen, I understand that things take time. But the severity of it is, within, since last winter, the flooding is so bad that almost every rain, I gotta, luckily I do what I do for a living, I bring home trash pumps. A normal person, be three hundred bucks a day, direct that. I have to pump up three feet overnight and hope my sump pumps take over. In fifteen years, I went through four thousand dollars worth of sump pumps. This summer, pulled a permit, put a fence in, took me almost three months to put it in, because my yard's underwater. It's progressively getting worse, something's changed. The street in front of my house is newer, not brand new, it's newer, it's buckling. Due to a farmer's tile or whatever, water's flowing through it. Now it, now it's not. It's all going into my house. What, if everyone's working together, what exactly is gonna be done for a short term solution? So I'm not dealing with three feet of water every time it rains? And if everyone's working together, what is the village, and it's saying it is Greg Clark's fault and the farmer. What is the village gonna do to expedite it, so he has to do something? Because under my eyes, you're talking to him. It's your fault, it's your fault, it's everybody's fault except for him.
And so as you said, you've been talking to Amy and Amy, and I've been talking quite a bit about it. And we've had numerous conversations about this, in fact, we had a discussion about this very topic this morning. So maybe you can kind of fill the board in on exactly where we're at right now on this?
I mean, sorry to cut you off, Mr. Cross, but it's.
I understand, I understand your frustration, I really do.
We're at twenty seventh day end of the January, and my pump hasn't shut off since last September. That's somewhere wrong, that's severe. Now, the next step is, all the damage that's going on, now keep in mind, in the years past, I was able to go down in my car and space one time, bleach already being cleaned. Well, when a house is sitting with three feet of, of water, or six inches of water for a course of a year, bad things are just happening. You know, if this keeps up for another year, my house is most likely gonna get condemned due to mold.
So let me, let me have Amy address this, so she can just kind of fill the board in on where we're at right now, okay?
There's no short term solution. I mean, that's just the bottom line. Like you said, it's severe.
Moving forward, what is the village planning on to do with the landlord?
What has the village done, I guess is, is where we're at, and like I said, there's no short term solution. I've been trying to work on this since you first called me, since I was here probably a month, and I haven't stopped working on it. Yeah, we get ice dams down South Second Street, because the water, it looks like a main break. It'd be better if I, I think I should maybe show some of you.
Can I show? If I pull up a phone, can I show them a picture of the rainfall in September?
I don't think that would do it justice to show that, show them, show them on the phone. But just to describe it a little bit, it, a swale was, was filled in by the Canadian National Railroad. And then, and so we have subsurface issues, and we have surface issues with, with the flow of the water coming down. And it's, we think there's a broken drain tile involved, that's the subsurface water. And we have the surface water, and the, because of what was filled in with the, the Canadian National Railroad with some debris. You know, and, and like Dan says, it's been going on for so many years that the water has just changed from its natural flow, and then it's, it's going through Mr. Clark's property, and.
Which is the farm field.
The farm field, behind their houses. So it flows in the wrong direction from its natural flow. It goes through the farm field, and then, for some reason, it's gravitating towards just those two houses at the corner of Dan's, and then the, another house, four forty-five, four forty-four and four forty-five, South Second Street. And it's, it just gravitates towards those two houses. He pumps it out, goes on to South Second Street, it goes south towards Route fifty, and it goes into the ditch there. So, you know, we don't know why. We've then, well, we've been in contact with ComEd, they have been, we've been in contact with the Canadian National, removed the debris. They're not cooperative, so we reached out to, to ComEd, because they put the debris in ComEd's right of way, which is where the swale is. So we reached out to them, they've been extremely cooperative, they wanted to try to solve this problem comprehensively, which means they want to redig that swale, so that the water will go into its natural flow pattern and go, because it's, it's the shortest distance for the water to go back down to fifty and, on that side of the street, or on, behind the apartments all the way down to fifty instead of way back around and through the neighborhood. So unfortunately, we've reached out to the county as well, and they would consider that a whole new drainage project, and consider that new water, because it's been going in the wrong direction for so long. So we would have to do a whole study, which would be probably upwards of fifty thousand dollars, because we would have to tie into the county storm system, to, to put that water back to its normal flow. And perhaps upsize pipes, we'd have to get a permit from the county to do that, so ComEd probably won't be able to recut that drain in. That's just the surface water issue. If we address the subsurface issue, there's a tile broken somewhere that needs to be fixed, so that there's not so much water going underground and hitting his basement. That tile could be anywhere, we have no idea. And the only way to find out is do a drain tile survey. We think it's on the farm field, we're not sure. ComEd has agreed, we, we have commissioned a, a drained house study just on the farm field, because we, we have to keep the parameters of that contained, okay? So we don't own that property, we have to get permission from the owner. ComEd again has been very cooperative with us. They don't have to be.
No, they are.
But they have been, because the village got involved. They agreed to pay half of a drain tile survey. And the village is gonna contribute to that, and we've asked Mr. Clark to contribute to that also.
And, and, I know you don't have to answer this, because every time I talk to Greg, he's always very offensive, like, he's always on defense. It is, he can never get a meeting with Amy. He, he tells me, and this, and I'm.
Well, that's not true.
I know this, you know, I'm, well, I don't know this, but.
Very accessible.
But I can never get a meeting with the Amy, the new village manager, visiting her, you know, and we're in a town with six thousand people, and I can go to the city of Chicago and arrange a meeting faster. Fairly, that's the period I was going by, this is a small town feel, I'm from the city, and when something arises like this, engineers are without, out there within a couple days, but they have way more money, way more people, the whole nine yards, and there are more sewers. I understand that this is gonna take time, but however, like I stressed last winter, now you guys gotta keep in mind, when this is going on in the wintertime, a police knocking on my door at one, two o'clock in the morning, asking me to unplug my pumps. You know, so there's a lot of things going on in between all this, little things. I have neighbors going down a whole block. What are you gonna do about this? I called the village, I called Greg Clark. Nothing, I don't know what to tell you. People stop.
Have you dug on your property to see if you can find a drain tile that's been broken?
No.
Have you dug anywhere around your foundation to see if you?
No, because I'm, I'm afraid, oh, I have drain tile for, around my footing, for, to keep water away from my house. It's useless, because I have so much water coming to my house, on top of the ground and underground. So I'm.
Well, if we, if there's a requirement for them to come on your property, to see if there's a drain tile on your property?
I offered it, I offered it to the village and Greg Clark all last summer when my fence was down and it was wide open lane.
I'm just saying, there might be something you might have to contribute, if there's a broken drain tile on your property.
I, well, I don't believe it's on my property, because it's.
Well, we won't know unless you dig, is what I'm saying.
Where do you propose I dig?
I'm saying that, that would be up to you.
Okay.
Regardless, regardless, we're gonna move forward, you know, with this drain tile study on that farm field, as long as we can get permission.
Right.
From Mr. Clark, we've been in touch with them.
Yes, we've had a meeting with him.
We've, we've been open communication with him.
Okay.
He's sometimes difficult to get to respond. So it's not that he's being ignored by us, you know, or.
And this is where communication is key. The neighbor next door that she spoke about, what is it, four or five, Dale Baderman. I asked, have you heard?
He's here.
He's here.
Dale's here.
I asked, have you heard from anything from the village? The last I, and I'm gonna call him, I called, I've tried to arrange meetings, no one's ever called him back in a year, a year. The only reason I got an email from you, I'm assuming is because I called Mr. Cross at his place of business. That's the only reason why I'm assuming that I got an email response, is because I had to call the mayor at his place of business.
But Amy's been talking to you.
I don't, I did, the email I got that before that was September thirteenth, of saying that Greg Clark asked about drain tile. That was it, it was just a heads up, I just said, thank you for a heads up.
But I know that it's, this has been an ongoing conversation, it's been an ongoing process, I know that, because Amy and I have had conversations about this all fall, and throughout this winter, working with the C, you know, trying to work with the CN, trying to work with ComEd, trying to work with Mr. Clark, trying to bring all of these pieces together.
But how is every, but if everyone isn't on the same page, how are you working together? Like, when I go to work, and I have to work with thirty different other construction guys and crews, we do just little things like we do here, we have a meeting, and we go address everything. If we try talking to each other over the phone here and there, you're not gonna get anywhere, because it gets put on the back page, back burner, and that's it. And that's exactly what happens. So if everyone's diligently working together, how many meetings were actually together with everyone involved in one meeting? How, has that happened yet?
No, I don't, no, it hasn't happened, we haven't had the CN and ComEd in the same room.
Yeah, but it sounds like ComEd is really compliant, that's awesome, CN, everyone here knows that CN is.
Exactly.
Forget about it, so we can almost exclude CN, you know, there's most likely nothing's gonna happen with CN. ComEd's being awesome, Amy's being awesome, just by even calling ComEd and doing, I'm not complaining about her whatsoever.
So all I want you, I mean, all I can tell you is that we're not ignoring you, we're working diligently, working and trying to figure out an answer to this problem. It's not a simple answer, it's not going to be an expensive answer. I think if we can find a tile and get a tile repaired, I think it's gonna help a lot. And I think if we can get somehow work through this whole swale issue, and now the county's kind of throwing a wrench at us, which is just, I think that happened today, correct?
Yeah.
With our, we just had a meeting with the county today about this whole drainage, and now that's, they're kind of throwing a wrench in.
Gotcha.
And let's be clear here, I mean, I'm not gonna call you every day that I have a meeting with somebody about this project. You are more than free to call me and check in with me.
But, but.
I, I, I can't call you every time I, I work on this project, and I am working on this very hard.
And, and I appreciate that, but communication is key.
Absolutely, and.
When I have a whole.
Check in with me anytime that you want to, and I will do my best to get back to you as soon as I can. But I, I do have a lot of other projects that I'm working on.
Understood, but what about, well, I'll let Dale speak on it, behead himself, but thanks for your time.
If I missed your call, Dale, and I didn't call you back, I apologize.
I haven't heard from anybody in fifteen years.
I never, I've never had a message from you.
I wasn't working here fifteen years ago.
I've been to three, should I speak?
If you, if you want to, sure. Just give your name for the official.
Dale Baderman, I'm at four four eight South Second, I'm Dan's neighbor. I moved in there fifteen years ago, and this has been a problem for probably fifteen to thirty years. And not everything that's been said tonight is correct. I've been to three different village administrators over the last fifteen years. This is so bad, fifteen years ago, water come across that field, blew out my basement window, fills up my basement six feet of water in a heartbeat. The, the, I'm the one that got ComEd involved. ComEd hired an engineer to look at this, and I'm assuming you have that report, because it was emailed to me and to the village in the same CC copy. Their, their results from that engineering report, where this is the natural flow of water, and essentially what has happened here is the village of Peatown has allowed a subdivision, and all that development in that corner of town, because this affects that entire area, has been allowed to be built with no regard to any drainage, storm sewer, or water runoff.
That was back in the early seventies, correct?
Seventies, eighties.
Yeah.
And then we compound that with what's happened with ComEd's property back there, and CN, and that there's been no maintenance back there. And as far as the farm tiles, that's almost beating a dead horse, they're over a hundred years old, that was all farm ground back around the turn of the century. And all that drained down to Black Walnut Creek, across fifty and down through there. Trying to find them and repair them at this point, I, I don't know that it'd be any good. You can't stop the flow of water that naturally goes out to Black Walnut Creek. So somehow, we gotta figure out how to get it back going to there, and not through our houses. My driveway's ruined, Dan and I's fence have rotted out. This has been going on for a long time. That's, you see all that ice on the corner of Peatown Wilmington and Route fifty, they gotta chip out all the time? That's from my driveway. That flows through my yard, down the road, affects everybody down the block. I'm surprised there's actually not more people here from, from the neighborhood.
Right, and what are you, what are you suggesting?
Well, I suggested a long time ago that we all get together on the same page, because I can't completely blame Greg Clark either. He's got a piece of farm ground there, and the engineers' report from ComEd showed that that was the natural flow of water back prior to that all being developed. Then it got developed, and the natural flow of water is gonna continue to try and go back to the same existing path. So that was never rerouted. And it was, and it's been, so I.
What is the natural flow of the water then?
Right through our houses. And that's what ComEd's engineer went back in history and found the natural flow, because there's that, you got Second Street, and you got a hill and the swale that goes across that field. That swale is a natural flow of water that goes right towards our houses, about three or four houses right, right there. So we put houses right in the middle of that. How to fix that, I, you know, you're gonna have to put a storm sewer or something in to get some of that, you gotta, there's gonna be multiple fixes, and, and there's multiple problems here. You know, e- e- even something as simple as down on the corner of Route fifty and Second Street, all that water runs into Route fifty is pointless. Get a backhoe out there, in about twenty minutes, you could dig where the gutter drains into the ditch. I know that's partly the state, but they, all gotta work together.
That's all the state.
Well, somebody went and hand dug a little, a little trench in there already. It helped a little bit, but it, it just flows so fast by there, it just, it just goes right around the ditch and into the road. You know, at some point, it becomes a safety issue. Who's gonna get sued when there's an accident and six inches of ice on that corner? I think this is a little more serious than, than, you know, we've been dragging this out for years. Three different village administrators, I've been to personally.
Do you have any historical maps that that was the original swell of water?
You can pretty much go on the county and look at, on their website, you can go, go back different years and take a look at that. I've probably got more information than anybody in the room on this whole project. I've got a file full of that thick. I'm the one, I've, I've contacted CN, I'm the one that got ComEd involved. I've, I've been, met with Greg Clark numerous times, I've been to the village numerous times, and the village is the only one that has never, ever, in fifteen years, ever called me back or gotten in contact with me. Three different administrators. I always get appeased, whoa, 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 look into it, and then here we are. And I know you're working on it.
As I said, this, this first came to my attention this year, I never realized.
I didn't think I needed to come to a village meeting after going to the, you know, to the office here and pointing this out, because it's pretty obvious driving down there when you get more than a couple inches of rain, when the field floods. We've, we've put some berms around so it quits blowing through my garage and through my deck and through my windows, but it's still gotta flow, you can't stop the natural flow of water, that's, that's its law. So it is gonna be tricky to fix, but there's, there's some things we can do, but we all need to sit on it.
Yeah, I think we can set up something where we can do that.
Okay.
No, I think it'd be easier than trying to stand here at this meeting, I mean, I would be.
No, we can't fix it here.
No, exactly. I mean, I, I think we've got a little bit of, we have a plan, at least we have a movement forward that we've been working on, that Amy's been working on the last several months. I think we kinda need to see where that kinda falls here in the next few weeks.
Yeah, I have no idea what you're all working on.
Right. Right, again, I, I have never gotten a phone call from you, I've never had a conversation with you about this.
I didn't think I needed to call you, but with the village.
But I, again, I don't know, you know, what administrator you've talked to, this, Amy's the, the third administrator the village has ever had, so.
Well, the last fifteen years, there's been three then.
No, there was, there was George Gray, there was George Gray, and then there was Greg Stathnis, and then there was Amy. Those are the only administrators we've ever had in the village.
Well, I've been to the village three times in fifteen years.
Okay. Again.
And this is obviously a problem before I ever moved here. I, I didn't realize it was that big a problem until after a year or two of being in there and seeing what was going on.
Well, we are definitely aware of it, and we're definitely working on it.
Well, we would like to be kept in the loop a little bit here.
Well, as Amy said, please feel free to call her, you know, check in with her, but if we get to a point where we can give a, a little more of a thorough update, we can reach out to you and to Mr.
Ken Janan.
Yes, thank you.
You know, a lot, a lot down the block, you know, we work construction, we work farm history, we understand the, the farm tiles, we have a pretty good idea where some of these are. Other than digging them up and blocking them off, I don't know how you're ever gonna get the flow, because it flows all the way under Second Street. In fact, you can look at the end of my driveway and pretty much follow it across the road. The road is cracked, and the road is actually, this winter, just started to, to cave in a little bit. It hits the, when it hits the curb across the street from my house, there's so much pressure on them old farm tiles, it bubbles up along the curb just out of the ground for days after a rain. And then I'm sure those old tiles probably went to the east at an angle towards Route fifty, and eventually out to Black Walnut Creek that runs just outside of town. But that's three hundred years old, they're old clay tiles, there's been construction and road, you know, regone, and I'm sure that, I don't think you'll ever get that to flow again. And besides that, that water, that, those old, they're four inch tiles, are never gonna be enough to handle all the water up there now, especially with the homes and stuff like that. Probably took enough of your time.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Could I make a point real quick?
Sure, be, step up and give your name, please.
William Berkeley, I'm at five oh one South Second Street, I'm on the east side of the street from these guys. I'm south and east of both of them. And I know that field tile comes down, crosses across just south of Tommy Blog, you guys all know Mr. Blog, and you can see the crack in the street where it's bubbling up, and that was my point here, it's not just, these guys are dealing with this sump issue constantly. My sump pump runs way too much, it does, but, you know, whatever. It's not, nothing like what these people are dealing with. But if you look at the street from the village perspective, you guys put in curb, I don't know, I've been there twenty-five years, twenty-six years, I think, and you guys put in new curb and repaved Second Street years ago. There's sanitary sewer, there's no storm sewer, because everything runs down the curb line to Route fifty, and we all know that. My curb in front of my house has dropped at least two inches. The sidewalk in front of my, where my driveway is at, is cracked and it's because of the standing water. I mean, you guys can drive by there anytime and take a look at, from, like, say, block south, south all the way to fifty, you can see the damage that has been done on the east and west side of that street. So this is affecting not just the homes and everybody that, that lives up and down that stretch, but it's affecting all of the infrastructure, the curb, the street, everything is being affected. I got blacked out just peeling. I've got blacked out this peeling off in front of my house. Um, you know, and I know that happens, and it's been a while since you guys did pay that, but I'm just saying, this is causing other issues, and I know it's expensive, you said fifty grand to get a deal going just to, to figure out where these field tiles at. You can kinda get an idea just from standing out there, you can kinda see at least where it comes through that field, how it feels right through there, between their yards, and comes across to the east side. From there, and I don't know if, if I Googled it, or, or whatever, but I thought I saw an old plot somewhere, and it showed field tiles. So that might be a place to start, I don't know, I can even do it, I got time. Um, but what I'm saying is, it is a field tile issue, and they can't be fixed. Those issue, I mean, whatever, you're gonna be chasing that forever, they're a hundred year old clay tile. Something needs to get done in order to get that drainage from that field out to Second Street, and then we don't have storm sewer anyway, so I don't know, you know, but if you look at, all our mailboxes are in the same spot, crossed down the west side of Second Street, and it's six feet of ice out in front of that mailbox right now. What is it? It's not, uh, Orchard, what's the street that's right across?
Just, just, just-
That's it, I've always looked at it. That, where the school bus stops, it's a skating rink. It's, it's, it's a mess, and it's like that all the way down to Route fifty. So, I mean, this is affecting everybody from that point south for sure, there's no doubt. And I know there was issues with other people to the north before when that farm field used to flood, and it affected everybody on the west side of Second Street, all those new homes, well, they're not new now, but they're me. Everybody was affected by it. Now it's primarily just, what, three, four houses there on the west side that's really getting pounded?
Three, that are really-
For sure. Um, and then it, but it does affect us on the east side also.
Well, that, that water goes all the way behind you guys' house, goes all the way down to the restaurant-
Correct.
Comes back around-
Correct.
To the, to the north side of the restaurant, back to Second Street, down Second Street on the opposite side, dumps-
That's what I saw.
And then goes back around-
And see, that's what I say, that there's different broken segments, and I'm sure that there's some piece in there that's causing me to have as much water as I have. I mean, I've got dual sumps down there, they're pumping constantly and things like that. I don't have the problems they have. But from a village perspective, take a look at the sidewalk, take a look at the curb, take a look at the, the pavement out there, it's shot. And it's, you know, it's, especially wintertime, you guys know better than anybody, it's not gonna get any better, so, but, if Mike, you say.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, any other public comment? We shall move on to reports of committees, village administrators' report, are your packet? Do you have any looks down by that?
No, I don't.
All right. Police chief's report, no police chief's report tonight, engineer's report.
Um, the reporting admin resourcing project, the IOT, IOT funded project, had a bid opening last week, and the results were good. Uh, estimate and the funding amount were five hundred thousand. There were four bidders, and a little bidder came in, right, about four hundred seventy-six thousand, so it came in about twenty-four thousand under the funding amount and, um, estimate, so there's, you know, a little room if, you know, more things come up than you're not doing on the public floor, and it's gonna be covered part of the grant, so that's good news. Um, Aqua's still working on reviewing plans for the farming project according as well. And then for the DCEO grant for the sidewalk corners, um, that will be going up to bid later this weekend, the bid opening's here for February seventeenth.
Very good. All right, treasures reports also in your packets, no old business, move on to new business. Item A, home occupation permit application, R. Van Dyke, four oh five North Glenview Lane Finch and Flower Paperie. Van Dyke's here. Go ahead.
It, it, it's a home-based, uh, business, um, these would get renewed every January, and if I were to be at the code, then it looks, in compliance, I have no, uh, issues.
Selling art trends, greeting cards-
Online.
And other illustrated stationery items online.
Okay. So she's actually selling it up the-
Right, no-
Other than online.
Correct.
She won't have people going to her house to do it, that would be a question.
I'd move we approve the permit application.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee March, second by trustee Moravka to approve the home occupation permit application of Rachel Van Dyke.
March?
Yes.
Moravka?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Item B, resolution, a resolution to adopt the annual one thousand hour standard for IMR, IMRF participation.
This will just, uh, be in compliance with what we talked about with the personnel manual, since we changed it in there, we need to do this to be consistent with changing it in the personnel manual.
Discussion? If not, uh, motion to approve this would be resolution number nineteen dash R. fifteen, a resolution to adopt the annual one thousand hour standard for IMRF participation.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Bowden, second by trustee Ham.
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Moravka?
Yes.
All right. Item C, resignation of police officer Ryan Rabel. Dear Chief, please accept this letter as notice of my resignation from my position as police officer, my last day of employment will be two, 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 twenty-twenty. I received an offer to serve as a police officer for the Beecher Police Department, and after careful consideration, I realize that this opportunity is too exciting for me to decline, and it's been a pleasure working with you and your police department over the last five years, et cetera, et cetera. Motion to accept the resignation of police officer Ryan Rabel.
No motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Moravka, second by trustee Parker.
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Item D, ordinances, number one, an ordinance repealing a special use two oh one North Second Street.
So the, uh, plan commission held a, uh, meeting on January twenty-second, and considered the repeal of a special use ordinance on the property of two oh one South Second Street. Uh, they voted to recommend that repeal, the unanimous vote. Um, so if you recall, um, they, before you, at your last board meeting, um, Don, uh, was here, uh, with Mead Contracting, and he, um, purchased this property, so, uh, this special use, uh, followed the land, and it was a special use on, uh, property that would allow a automotive repair business, and, on the bottom floor, and apartment on the top floor, and then there would be a restaurant in the front of the building, a little former Napa building. And, um, so he would like that repealed, and then his vision for the future, um, that property would be an office on the top and, um, do some storage on the bottom, which is allowable, and be one, which is the current zoning, and then, uh, he would return, uh, later, uh, for a commercial use in the, uh, tier down the front, and commercial building would be rebuilt there, and, um, perhaps, um, apartment, an apartment on top, which would require, uh, special use, so he would, he would come back to expanding the zoning for that in the future. So that's what this ordinance, this ordinance is just a repeal though of that current special use that is on that property.
That has been attached to it.
Correct.
If not, a motion to adopt ordinance number nineteen dash forty-seven, an ordinance repealing a special use two oh one Second Street. Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Bowden, second by trustee Parker.
Bowden?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Moravka?
Yes.
An ordinance amending title nine, chapter one twelve, section one twelve point one nine of the Code of Peatone regarding the number of liquor licenses.
Well, we have a, a request for, um, a liquor license, so, from Del Carmen Restaurant, they are here to talk to you about that, but before, um, we get issued out, we need to create one, so we thought this would be a good order on the agenda for you.
And this is a class E?
Yes.
So we're going from three to four? Is that correct?
So I don't know if you want to hear from them first.
Yeah, I said, why don't we do that? Why don't we get a, an idea of where we're at? Hey folks?
Hi, I'm Evelyn Duncan.
Hi, Chulob Nakon.
Hello, how are you?
Very good, thank you.
Good.
So currently, we, um, own a few restaurants further, about half hour north than here. Um, we have four of them, one of them, um, it has a liquor license, and then we also have, in the same location, it has a liquor license, also have gaming in there, and that's how it is to be very helpful. So we're trying to have like the same thing.
So they're looking at the, uh, the former Mexican restaurant that's near Burcas, out on Harlem Avenue, has been sitting empty for a little while, and, um, so they're leasing that from the owner, uh, who's, who's an investment, uh, company basically, um, but, uh, it, where exactly, or you have four other restaurants, um, you've been in business for about eleven years or so.
Yeah.
Uh, twelve. Twelve, and you have, uh, so four restaurants, and one in Worth, and-
From Bridgeview, Westport, and, uh, Bull Run.
Okay, so, um, you know, a great track record, you've been in business a long time, and, um-
I'm, I'm excited about a Mexican restaurant.
You too, aren't you?
My stomach's growling, so.
You have, uh, you're, you're a, a corporation, you're, you're, you're an LLC?
Let's say a family member owner.
Okay.
Yeah, they're, they're all family owners.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not like a corporation or something, you know.
It's not a, it's not a franchise.
Okay. But, but I just say that only because we, we can't give out liquor licenses to sole proprietorships, so, but, so just for purposes of a liquor license, you, you are listed on the Secretary of State's website as a corporation, but you're a family-owned business, so thank you for clarifying that. They have a good rating on, uh, they're not necessarily rated, but they don't have any complaints on the Better Business Bureau, just for your acknowledgement. The, the police chief did do a background check on them, and we'll see any issues with them as a, a company, or, uh, any issues.
And their food gets good reviews on-
There you go.
It's creeping on your website.
There you go.
They have, they actually have, this is the property, uh, and, I think, I don't know that you pulled a permit yet, but they've, they're looking to do what you would do aside.
Oh, permit, like to, yeah.
Yeah. They've, we're working, we're working on it.
Um, I, I think, um, account when she came in, that was part of what she was doing.
Because she pulled the, the, the paperwork.
But we haven't, okay.
But we, we haven't gotten it back yet from you, but, um, they're eligible for six, um, gaming machines based on the current legislation.
But that's something they do themselves through the state.
Correct.
We have nothing to do with that.
Right.
And your tension is, uh-
Right, we would need to get a license.
Similar to your other ones?
Yes.
Okay, still, finally, you-
I mean, same, same menu, everything, um, you know, same food and everything, so, wanna keep it the same since we've been successful with the kids.
What do you hope to open?
Um, hopefully March.
So how about, um, your hours of operation? Was it, I don't know what you're about, what, what ages it's like?
Um, what we put there was kinda just, um, we weren't sure the hours, so we just put a big timeframe to see what you would approve, and then we can decide from there whatever, you know, you approve, but really, we were thinking maybe like ninety, eleven.
Which would be, yeah, I mean, that fits well within the norm.
Oh, my God.
Yep, yep. And then you would adjust that as you see fit, I mean, as you go forward. Any other questions from the trustees? So I think the first thing we do then is, we would, a motion to adopt ordinance number nineteen dash forty-eight, an ordinance amending title nine, chapter one twelve, section one twelve point one nine of the Code of Peatone regarding the number of liquor licenses, increasing the number of licenses in the class E to four.
So move.
Second.
Motion by trustee March, second by trustee Moravka.
March?
Yes.
Moravka?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And then, we have the application for business registration, should we do that separately? Yes, separate motions. So a motion to approve the application for business registration for Del Carmen Restaurants at three fourteen South Harlem Street.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Moravka, second by trustee Parker.
Moravka?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
And then we have an application from Del Carmen Restaurants for a class E liquor licenses, which is now available by ordinance. A motion to approve that application.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by trustee Ham, second by trustee Moravka.
Yes.
Moravka?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Motion carries. Welcome, welcome to Peatone. We're very excited.
Good luck, nice.
Thank you.
Louise Field.
We'll see you soon.
Yes, definitely, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
All right, number two, Jim Williams, Cornerstone Coffee House, one twenty-four West Main Street. Come on up, Jim. No liquor license?
No, no liquor license.
Nothing for coffee?
No.
D Y O P.
We're gonna keep it more of a family.
Very good, y'all tell us about it.
Uh, well, there's really not a whole lot to tell, other than, uh, I've been retired for a few years, and I'm looking for something to do. I bought the property on the, on the, you know, one twenty-four West Main, which includes the dance studio, and, uh, a little disappointed in the way Main Street looks, and that seems to be changing now in the last, you know, several months, so we're gonna have, uh-
Got some activity going on.
Hopefully a lot of traffic on Main Street, and, uh, my wife and I would like to do the coffee shop, and, uh, I gave kind of a sample menu to, to Amy, and it's, of course, nothing's written in stone, but, uh, really, my wife is a driver on some of this stuff, where, um, we want a little bit higher grade of things, you know, we wanna have Coke and Pepsi, we want more natural and organic wherever we can, and, uh, fair trade coffee and tea, baked goods, which we're, uh, we've been talking to, uh, Two Whisk Bakery in Mantino to offer some baked goods. Hopefully, if things go well, we don't wanna take on too much right at the very beginning, but, uh, we'd like to maybe have deli meat, you know, uh, we wanna go, maybe do as much as we can and stay under that full kitchen, you know, it's, I just, you know, I did retire a few years ago, I don't wanna take on too much, but, uh-
Good work.
Yeah, community-based, family-based, you know, and, and we really see a lot of nice things happening. My, uh, we're in Moni, but my son and daughter-in-law, two grandkids are in Peatone, and, uh, when I was tearing walls down and ceilings and stuff, I'd see all the families walking[1747.08] down and ceilings and stuff, I'd see all the families walking up and down the street, and we're giving them a place to stop, you know. We, we think it'd be a good deal with the, the dance studio right behind us there, with a little bit of, you know, customer base built in, so.
I might wander down the street a few times.
Just bring your shovel, okay?
I know, I know.
Really, I didn't really prepare anything, I just figured I'd be here.
Appreciate it.
If you have questions, that, you know.
So it's gonna be a sit-down with tables and chairs and?
Yeah, yeah, we wanted to be very comfortable, kind of homey, you know, maybe like a community table, or a sofa, or something like that.
What do you think you'll open?
Pardon me?
What do you think you'll open?
That, that's a big question. I'm doing this all out of, out of my own funds, and I, finding out, you know, I was in the electric, ComEd, NRG, Midwest Generation, and all the power plants, so this is all very new to me, and I'm finding it's hard to keep people working for me, you know. I lost, my nephew, who was a, did the framing for me, and he just kind of disappeared off the map, and electrician, I just hired my third electrician to get the work done, so we've, we've hit a couple of bumps, but we were hoping for March, April, something like that. I hope I can still make that, but that's...
We're looking forward to it.
That's, that's our plan, and we're really looking forward to just, you know, just being a part of the community.
And we appreciate it, we're excited about it.
Yeah.
Been talking about it for a while, so.
Yeah, and that's, that's kind of why I'm here, because a lot of people are asking questions.
Yeah, and I think it's good, I think it's good that...
And, and again, I see all this movement in town, and I wanted to make sure I get my foot in the door.
Well, there you go.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the trustees? All right, if not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the application for business registration for Cornerstone Coffee House, Jim Williams.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by trustee Moravka, second by trustee Parker.
Moravka?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Jim.
Thanks so much.
Good luck.
Good luck to you.
I just want to let you all know that, if there's a, I hope I'm not gonna talk out of school on this.
Uh-oh.
We, uh, we are in negotiations with Jim, or we're about to be on a TIF redevelopment agreement on his, on his property, as he says that he's doing this out of his pocket, but he is in the TIF district, and so even though we don't have a lot of funds in the TIF yet, in the downtown TIF, we do want to enter into a redevelopment agreement with him, and so that, you know, we, we hope to, that he will be our first downtown redevelopment agreement, and that, you know, we hope that it will, it will help him, and, and so we put some numbers together with the EDG group, and we're gonna schedule a conference call with him, go over that, and, you know, maybe it won't help him at this moment, but.
Down the road.
Down the road, so that he can, you know, sustain what he's gonna create, and possibly help him grow in the future, so just want you all to know that, so that when I bring you a redevelopment, you'll be ready for it.
Amy and I had a fifteen-minute meeting that lasted about two and a half hours. We talked about a lot of good stuff, you know, I mean, if I could get my parking lot in better shape, I'd like to do a lot of things, you know, open the parking lot up to the village to do, we, we talked about bringing the farmer's market back possibly. I know there's residential across the street, across First Street, so I don't know if you can do that, but I'd like to do a food truck event, and I really want to be part of this.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Good luck to you.
Very exciting, yes.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Good luck, thank you.
All right, questions of the press? No press? Correspondence, communications, petitions?
Just to go back up to your, you have your treasurer's report in your packet?
Uh-huh, yes.
Then I think you're due for your quarterly report, treasurer's report, so, Marcy, you said you, you should have that by the end of the week, it'll be in your box, so just be ready.
Can we get a date scheduled for the, the budget?
The CIP?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth?
I think they changed it.
Yeah, it'll be twenty. So let me send out another email on that, if I didn't send you all an email on that.
Thank you, folks.
No, because you said you were gonna check to see.
Okay, so it's the twenty-ninth.
I just wrote it down.
At eight AM, twenty-ninth at eight AM, eight to ten here.
She's bringing donuts.
With coffee and donuts, for sure.
I remember that.
What was the ALC meeting after that, you had that scheduled, right?
Yes, that'll be.
Did you ever contact, you guys know about that meeting?
It's at the twenty...
Twenty-ninth?
No, it was in March, right?
Yes.
It was after that. You got something in the book somewhere.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. I'll send it out.
It is March fourth, at five thirty.
It's not even on my calendar.
It was just an email, it was set up.
It's at five thirty, I know that.
Yeah, March fourth.
It's on my calendar.
Okay. Anything else from the board? Not a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Motion by trustee March, second by trustee Moravka.
March?
Yes.
Moravka?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
And Parker?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned.